Okay. Let's go ahead and tell our men and daughter, and we certainly want to thank each of us for being here tonight. And I appreciate you coming. We have some special guests with us. They're going to talk to us here in just a few minutes. But we'll get started and have our pledge of allegiance. When that's ten people with allegiance and pledge of allegiance, then Rodney is going to give her the case.
Pledge of allegiance, certified in United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this beautiful day. You blessed us with it and thankful for all the many blessings you bestowed upon us. For all we ask to be that we will be with this council, mayor, and may they make the decision to be best suited for our city. Bless our city, Lord. May God direct us in everything we say and do. We ask for Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. First time on agenda tonight is approval amendments from the last meeting. Is there a motion to approve a change? I'll make the motion. Okay, Lynn, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, great. Hall of famer, Seattle. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Brenda Osswald and her distinguished guests if they would please come forward. They asked for the special artwork that they made at the senior center at the rec. And they've been looking forward to coming. They say super big. We appreciate y'all taking the time to come. Wherever you want to be. What do you got? You've got some artwork that you've got.
We've got some artwork. I'm Brenda Osswald, I'm the manager at the senior center. This is Ms. Fay Harris. Fay is our art director up there. She comes over twice a week and does arts and crafts with them. And she's going to tell you a little bit about what they're doing.
Well, a couple of things I want to point out. First of all, this is our, we came up with a motto that we think is very important. And one of our gals came up, put it actually on a piece of board for us. Each day I will make one person's life a little better by noticing one positive thing about them. And I think just about anybody could use that for a motto and really make, you know, not only friends, but to realize yourself that you are of value. A second thi-- okay, take that. Thank you. Second thing, for every holiday, we try to come up with something that we can hang up on the door. And this was what we ended up coming up with. Brenda's idea was, of course, this was for Halloween. And she said, well, why don't we just put Happy Fall, y'all? And so that was... Another thing that we've done, we're doing is we're writing our life story from when we were little children. Once upon a time in Hamilton, Alabama. And we have had some published. We have sent them into Good Old Days Magazine and Reminis Magazine. And so we're hoping we can get some things published there. But we just thought it would be so nice to leave something. For instance, did you know that at one time, people didn't have even pumps? And they had to go down to the spring and get water to drink and for bathing? It was, it's just amazing to find out. Did you know that there used to be red, white, and blue school buses? There were. And what happened was in about forty-eight or forty-nine, they used to bring actually children to school in wagons that were pulled by horses, and they had some benches. Well, now, not only did they change in about forty-nine, fifty, but they started, they modernized, and they had red, white, and blue school buses. Then, the schools all started consolidating. And when they started consolidating, we came up, of course, with the yellow school buses. And all of that is in here. Every time anybody is new, and we have Kathy as one of our newest member, we asked them to write a life story about the things they remember when they were young. And we all have so much now. And when Louise Pickle wrote her story, Louise, raise your hand. There you go. You know, I've been a teacher all my life, and I guess these are my children. I'll tell you, we have, we have a real wonderful rapport there. It's just great, and we miss each other if we're not there. We're lucky to have Louise and Mary with us tonight because they've both been out ill. But we just miss each other so much when we don't get together. And Louise was told about the time, you know, she had never had any dolls. And this wonderful storekeeper had a few dolls, little black dolls left. And so they got the first dolls, she and how many sisters, I have three sisters. And they all got a doll, but you know what? Before long, the house burned down and their babies burned. And she never had another doll. And so what we did, when her story was published, we gave her an antique doll. You know, it's just a wonderful, wonderful rapport that we've established down there. Larry Armstrong is a pain, but... He told us he wasn't going to come tonight because he was afraid we would pick him out. But, you know, we can always go down and get things copied, and we really appreciate that. Now, we, each of us has something that we want to show. Why don't you start? Being you're already lined up like this. Now, we started out copying things. And now, this, I want you to show this one first because this one was, she did that herself. Look at this beautiful color. Isn't this just amazing? We're now getting so that we can put pictures together by thinking, taking something out of this picture and another. Okay, now show your... Okay.
In case you wonder, I love the mountains.
Okay, Louise, what have you got?
This is my first one. And this is my life.
You can see the growth that is coming as we practice each of these things. For instance, these ladies have never heard of a fan brush. And now we use a fan brush for just about everything, don't we?
We do.
Okay, Mary Hutchinson has something that this, we started, we decided to all start our own personal book to keep, kind of keep track of our life. And she has really taken this scrapbooking to show us just a few of the things in there that you think are important.
Okay, we painted the M and the H in class, she told us that.
Those are our initials.
These are my grandchildren, Allison Stockman and Grady Stockman. They go to Hamilton School. This is the country diary of a Hamilton lady.
That was our title.
That's my daughter-in-law. She works at Saitel. She's one of the managers. This is my son. He works at the Toyota place here in the Blue Springs. And my daughter at the bottom, she just got her PhD, and she works in Osing, New York.
It's a brag book that we all... Okay, and you can see, we started with January, and we have special things that have happened in our life all through every month. Okay, what have you, this, I have to really brag on that one. She, hold that up.
This is my first time I ever did craft.
Isn't this wonderful? Look at those drawings. Look at that water. I just think she did such a wonderful job.
This is the only one I have finished yet so far. And the only one I, first time I ever did crafts in my life.
Okay, Kathy. Kathy is our newest member, and she just got started. But yes, she said, we've got to have a flag in this. She was adamant about that.
I'm not finished. It's supposed to look something like this, except without the purple flowers. But I said, I've got to add a flag because I have a passion for the American flag.
Okay, Lerna, can we see yours?
It's right out.
Right out.
Yeah, she does, you know, the thing is, I don't think she realizes how good she really is.
I did go look into it. I picked it up because I hadn't been there a couple of times in my lifetime.
Did you go in the water? It's cold.
This is one I wanted you to go.
Oh, that's beautiful.
A barn in Earnfield. And I did this in ninety, I think.
But can you believe that they just started, well, less than a year and a half ago? And they're making so much.
What, sixty?
Sixty.
Sixty and above, you're more than welcome to come.
I want to thank everybody for giving donations to life here and buying ads. Hamilton was second out of five counties. I got second place, and Hamilton did. And I'm taking them up again this year. Please buy them for me if you buy an ad or give a donation.
You need to watch Larry because if you see Larry, you're going to see dollar signs.
We went back Mayor Williams, too. He provided us with some of our art supplies. And they called and provides us with a good center to go to, and we have food there to eat, and fellowship, and lots of different games and stuff. So everybody over sixty come and enjoy the good times with us guys.
And we did have guys. And we did play...
Dominoes and checkers.
And dominoes.
Bingo.
And bingo. And we have a brand-new ping-pong table.
Brenda, how did you make these all of her time?
FaceTime is given to us as a volunteer. And she comes in twice a week and does the painting. And it's just wonderful. The ladies have just done so well.
She comes in, puts up with people like me that don't know what they're doing.
Hey, we were all back there. Don't kid yourself.
We all have to learn.
Thank y'all.
Well, I'm proud I became sixty years old and learned how to do this.
Thank y'all for having us.
Once again, thank y'all for coming tonight. We certainly appreciate it. They make a lot of beautiful things. Been hanging for a year or so. Talking to a great guy. Okay, this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Sarah Boyd. Called her, asked her, would she want to give a wrap-up on the Jerry Brown Arts Festival? Because she's been so excited. I had to tell you that maybe, believe it or not, maybe. But just kind of give us, give us an update on how it went. The crowd was huge when I was there. So if you would care, Sarah, just come on up and give us something.
In January, as most of you know, we didn't have places to go. No, this was to be our thirteenth annual Jerry Brown Arts Festival. And we had no place to go. And we have a wonderful new business in our community. And instead of welcoming them, they welcomed us. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation offered us their warehouse to have the thirteenth annual Jerry Brown Arts Festival. And from all that we have heard, it was a huge success. People from fifteen different states came into Hamilton. Nevada, Arizona, of course, Florida, Mississippi, Georgia, Tennessee, but North Carolina. I don't remember the names of all the states, but there were fifteen different states. And we don't have an exact number that were there. But we're estimating there were somewhere between four thousand five hundred and five thousand people attended the festival. This was a two-day event. We had seventy artists. We had seventy-two artists, which I believe is one of the largest that we have had to do, the number of artists. We had two artists that were unable to make it. One of them because of illness. The other one, if you remember, a couple of days before the festival, we had an ice storm, and they were from the Alabama-Tennessee line, lived up on a mountain, and couldn't get off the mountain. So they had to cancel. We had something new this year. We had a writer's look. We had several local artists, local writers, that had their books there, autographed them. To me, even former librarian, this really touched me, you know, that we had this. But this was a total community effort. We could not have done it. We could not have had the successful arts festival this year without the total community. Thank you, city, your departments, the rec center, the police, the street department. Anyone we called on that we needed something, yes, ma'am, Wendy, you need it, yes, ma'am, Wendy, you need it, we'll have it there. And thank you from the bottom of our heart. The Arts Council came together and worked so hard. We worked long hours, a lot of dedicated people. And tonight, because of this, we have three new members to our Arts Council. So, you know, we're thankful for that. We have three groups that I have must mention because it is so refreshing and so rewarding to see young people stand up. We had the Hamilton High School Junior Supedans who volunteered. We had the Ramp School of Ministry. And if you came down there to park, they had you parked and on the shuttle and on your way in no time. And we have the Bevill State Community College Hampton Campus ambassadors who did the children's art station where the children could actually have hands-on art. We have artists from every genre that you could think of. We had paintings, jewelry, woodworking, you name it. We had, we literally had something for everyone. We had a lot of returning artists. We also had a lot of new artists. And that's always great when we draw new people in. Our hotels and restaurants, we went out to eat Saturday night, and the restaurants, every time you passed by, they were full. So we drew people, not only the artist was eating, but we saw other people that had been to the festival. So all of this, you know, we just can't find people enough. Because I truly believe this was one of the most successful. Tom, if you had not, did not come and missed coming to their beautiful, beautiful facility. The lighting was perfect. The sound was perfect. We just couldn't say enough good things about them. And corporate sponsors, thank you to everyone who helped. Because by having corporate sponsors that we have, that are willing to step up and put their money where their mouth is, we can keep this free, free admission so that it doesn't matter what your economic status is. You can come and enjoy the beauty of these arts. Because there is, if you didn't come, you missed a trade. And of course, the artists themselves, they were great. We actually really, really had a good group of artists. And we're, we can't say enough about Tom Bigby and how gracious they were and how kind they were, how willing they were to help. We just want to say a big thank you to them. Welcome to our community. And anybody volunteers, we had people that have never volunteered, came out and volunteered to help us. Because you don't realize how many things that it takes to do this. Because we have, we have to have booth sitters. We have to have some, artists can't leave their booths. They have to have someone that can go get their lunch for them. You know, all these type of things. And the police, thank you for the police presence. I did not hear of one incident this year of any problems that we have had in the past with shoplifting and things. And thank you for your police presence because that really helps. So all total, I think we did Hamilton proud this past week. I really did. But there's one other thing that I want to end with. Mark your calendar. Turnover twenty sixteen and mark it for March fifteenth, sixth. I don't know where we're going to have it. After this year, don't tell us we can't handle it. We will hopefully have the Arts Festival next year, March fifteenth, sixth. And just thank everyone for everything because five thousand people coming into Hamilton, fifteen from fifteen different states. Motels, a lot of these artists stayed at least two nights in the motels, plus all the sales tax that we've received from this. I think we did okay for Hamilton.
I know you did.
I know it's a bit of an odd thing, but...
It is. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of hard work. By the time Monday, last Monday was here, I was ready to fly. But it was working.
You all did a wonderful job. I mean, we are blessed to have Tom Bigby, for sure. And they laid a home for you that might not have any other place, hadn't been for them.
That's true. We...
Thank you to them, but thank you to all y'all that worked. I went there Saturday and Sunday. I don't know how many volunteers you had, but there were probably a couple of dozen.
We had the community volunteers, plus all the jumping. And isn't it rewarding to see young people step up and be willing to do service, community service?
Well, that shows you what you do when you come together.
Right. And the Arts Council, the Northwest Alabama Arts Council, really did an outstanding job. I'm going to commend them because of the outstanding work that they did. Thank you to everybody.
Well, the Arts Council needs to be applauded because, and you, I know you probably day and night, truth was known, but it does not go unnoticed. They all know that.
We appreciate that. We appreciate all the support that you give us. As I said, without the support of the city, the community, we couldn't do this. It takes a true community effort to do this, but it's worth it.
I think you really put down on the mighty boys.
But thank you. We tried.
Thank you. You had somebody watching that didn't go. You missed treatment. So you should take time to try to go with the least you can get. Because there is something that everybody can thank for kids all the way up. No matter what you like, there's some type of art that I think you enjoy. Next item on agenda is a record date to approve a resolution number two thousand fifteen dash three sixteen one. This authorizing and approving a formal amendment to the City Hamilton City GB project, Country Place Living. A couple of weeks ago, you know, we voted to, to close out our CGB grant. And then the city paid us seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars where it was. So this will be finalizing that. But they have good news. This week, or last week, the president of CB Homes called me, and they are actually going to reimburse us that money. So they're going to do it over a period of nine months and do it starting first of April. So next time, once we're looking at our seventeen thousand. And I've never heard that happen before. So very much thank you to CB Homes because they have a beautiful facility. Country Place Living, great place to live. And it's absolutely beautiful down there. So I don't know if I'd have heard that, Ed, doing that, calling that back. They wanted to make things right for the city since we were making things right for them. So what this is doing tonight is to go ahead and get this closed out so we can get a check to the property folks. So this is a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any other discussion? Hall of famer, Seattle. Any second, Jen.
Here, I got it.
Okay. Skip down just a little bit while we've got Heath and Kirk here because they may have to leave here in a few minutes. I'm going to first let Mr. Heath read and come and give us an update on some projects that we're looking at. All right, I already took bids on for water and sewer. That, well, is Spring Street and Fourth Avenue.
That's right.
You want to go ahead and give us, which one you want to go first?
Again, we took bids on Friday on two projects that are part of the two thousand fourteen bond issue we did. One is the Fourth Avenue Water Rehab and Street Resurfacing. Low bid was submitted by C&amp;J Contracting, amount of two hundred thirty-one thousand, three hundred forty-eight dollars and sixty cents. We checked the bid and everything checks out. And we make a recommendation that you make that award to C&amp;J tonight. And we also took bids on the Spring Street Sewer Rehab. That project came in, low bidder was Ballard Builders of Winfield, in the amount of two hundred fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars. We've also checked that out and make a recommendation, like an award to Ballard Builders.
Is there a time schedule to start on these projects?
Probably sometime mid to late April. Once we get bonds and insurance from the contractors and have a pre-construction meeting, probably thirty to forty-five days from now.
Would you explain a little bit of what we'll do on each one of these?
Well, on Fourth Avenue, you've got a six-inch asbestos concrete water line. It's very difficult for the water department to work on. A lot of the fittings, they don't make. It's very difficult. Needs to be replaced. So we're replacing it with a new PVC water line, tying all the surfaces on, putting new hydrants. And also resurfacing all of Fourth Street from Highway forty-three all the way over to Second.
Second Avenue.
So it's basically replacing existing water, water system that's deteriorated, outdated. The Spring Street Sewer is a small diameter, I think four-inch in places, that serve several houses. Water department's had a lot of trouble in that area of backups and overflows. So it's replacing that with a new gravity sewer system, eight-inch PVC gravity, that'll serve the entire area on Spring Street. Existing lines, four-inch, in places, we're putting a new eight-inch in, a new manhole. And then also a small amount of street resurfacing just where we're cutting the streets on that project.
Is there a time to finish this?
Yeah, I think both of them have a four-month construction time limit. So once we have a notice of, or notice of proceeds, the contract, we're going to use bonds, you'll have four months to complete work. I would anticipate taking that long. We build it's time to whether, you know, the other delays that are out of control.
And both these, Kurt, I think, come in, both of them, what's you had projected?
Our estimate was around four hundred sixty thousand, believe me. I think if you add them up, that's about four, forty-five, four, forty-six. So around fifteen thousand, hundred today combined.
I just get y'all rest today.
Time to get like...
Anybody have any questions? If we could pull them up.
Well, at least, I'm just going to ask somebody a question about her. Grandview Drive Bridge Project, anybody heard anything on that?
Yes, plans were submitted to the state back in November. They are being reviewed. We went through a transition. Aldott has changed from, changed their regions. So before, you were in the Tuscomby area. Now you're in Tuscaloosa. The plans were submitted from Tuscomby to Tuscaloosa and got lost in the shuffle. We resubmitted plans, but they do have them in Tuscaloosa now. They are being reviewed. They've actually been sent to Moncurven now to the Bridge Bureau. So we anticipate early to late spring, man, we start, we won't actually advertise that project out. We'll bid the project for you.
We're still online, right?
Yes.
What's the landing date?
I want to say maybe in June, July. I talked to Adrienne Dunn, Adriana Dunn, one day last week. And I think she told me June or July was the landing date.
We can keep this posted on the place. You know, we're seeing if you can know something. We don't want it to be knocked on. We want, I mean, you feel sure it's going to be still done or let out?
Oh, yeah, there's no question. I talked to Aldott. I think there was some confusion about maybe if the funding had been pulled, but it has not been pulled. Or the funding's still in place. So there's no reason it shouldn't be letting...
And they're thinking about that project will be starting this fall, is that right?
Yes, the bids are landing July or June or July. And there's probably a two-month turnaround with Aldott, a little bit slower process. But still, by this fall, we should be under construction.
That, how long's that going to take?
That's probably going to be nine to twelve months. So that's the demolition, the existing bridge, and then order and materials. It's going to be a little bit longer, right?
Nobody just don't need to put up billboards?
Heath, there's been some of these projects today. Mine's floating at forty-three for that matter. But what about the St. Bratton Bridge, South Town? When is that starting?
The city's under contract with a utility contractor, a moving water sewer. They're attached to the bridge in places and beside the bridge. We actually had a pre-construction meeting on that Friday. So that construction will start next week. As far as Aldott, I'm not...
They're down there clearing some trees and stuff today.
I'm not sure what their schedule is. Basically, we're getting all the utilities out of the way so they can replace the bridge.
We worked, the utilities are starting next week.
That's correct.
Okay. And we don't know where the bridge exactly is.
I'm not sure when their landing date is.
Thank you, Heath. Appreciate it. All right, let's go back to number twelve. With their big record dates for a little bit of C&amp;J Contracting, amount of two thousand, two hundred thirty-one thousand, three hundred forty-eight dollars. That's come out of the bond. Come out of acquisition, that is correct. Thank you, Scott. Okay, Lynn, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, Tim. Hall of famer, Seattle. Any discussion?
Oh, please, hey, they're not making different, where are you seeing, Jeff?
They're in Russell.
Russell and Coach Bowers at Memphis.
That's correct.
Okay. Hall of famer, Seattle. Thank you. Number thirteen is approval to Broward Construction, the amount of two hundred fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars for Spring Street Santeras Sewer Rehab. Is there a motion for that? Henry, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, Lynn, thank you. Okay, man. Thank you.
This bond money?
Yes. Out of the acquisition from, is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye on that. Thank you. Kurt, is there anything you need to sign today?
Yeah, there's a notice of award that I can get you to sign after we...
All right, Mr. Kurt, Atkins, uh, he would please give us an update on the Muncinware building. I believe you've got some reports about the fire metal studies and ADM and things, if it's going to be necessary for us to proceed further.
First off, I apologize for not getting you this sooner to review. Uh, just got, just gathered late this afternoon. Um, Jimlyn, uh, from, resident from our environmental office, she came several months back and gave you an update on where we were at, and she was supposed to be coming tonight, but, uh, she, uh, had an injury late last week. Uh, her mother's out of hip, they're trying to help her mother, she hurt her back, so, so, uh, we were scrambling today trying to get everything together. Uh, basically, what I've got in front of you, uh, the back is proposal, but the first page is what I want to talk about, to start with. Uh, when we initially started this process, we were gonna do it in a phased, uh, type, uh, way. Uh, phase one was to develop the initial assessment plan, that, I'm sure we completed that. Uh, you spent about five thousand dollars on that. Phase two was to conduct the initial assessment, determine if the site's contaminated, and is. Uh, that's complete, uh, and that was thirty thousand dollars, and that has been paid. We're now to phase three. Uh, Jimlyn has spent a lot of time over the last several months in, in contact with ADM, trying to determine what part of the agency that this was gonna fall under, uh, and she, she's now come to, uh, conclusion that it's gonna be a chapter thirteen plan. Uh, we, she was here to tell you exactly what a chapter thirteen plan is, but from what I've gathered from her, it's a very good thing. Uh, it, it's a, uh, it's a, it's a closure plan that ADM uses, uh, when there's something that they need to get done in hurry. So that's good for us, and that it moves things along in hurry. It's also one of the least expensive plans that you can be involved with. Uh, there are some of them, and some of our discussions with them, uh, there were times when we were talking about ADM fees of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, to, to have this thing happen, so to get into the chapter thirteen plan is, is indeed a very good thing. Um, the, the chapter thirteen plan, uh, well, the, the basic idea is that we will not remove any of the material from the site. Uh, we will stabilize the material on site, in the pond, and cover it up, similar to the way you cover a landfill. Uh, so, phase three, uh, is to move the chapter thirteen plan forward for the closure of the legumes. Uh, there's some plant preparations, some negotiations with ADM through that. The good news is, it also allows us to move forward on the building. Once she gets into those negotiations with ADM, uh, we can do a stormwater permit, that's the MPDES permit. We can do a stormwater permit for the entire site, that includes the ponds and the building, which we'll have to have anyway when we do grading plan, grading around the building. Uh, and then we can put a fence up around the ponds, say it's in the process of being permitted, and move forward. We're demolishing the building and doing the grading for the site, so that was very good news, and that we don't have to wait till the end of the process, uh, to get our part going here in Hamilton. Um, speaking of that, and something we need to work on, is the master site plan, the master, master plan for that site. We need to really decide, you know, at, at some point, council needs to decide what it is that's going out there and where it's gonna go, so we can get that grading plan in place and then move forward. We anticipate that, uh, she'll meet with, if this is approved tonight, she'll meet, go ahead and set up a meeting with ADM this month, and just as soon as she has that first meeting, we can probably go ahead and start advertising for the building demolition, so, uh, we anticipate being able to advertise within a month and take bids, uh, you know, a month or so after that, and move forward with, with the building demolition. The next phase after that, once the chapter thirteen plan is in place, is to get all of the permits that'll actually allow us to stabilize the material in place and close it like a landfill. That's the phase four. Phase five is the actual fieldwork that will take place to do that, and you'll notice it says the plan includes, uh, stabilizing the slug of Portland cement pulverized concrete. Some of that pulverized concrete will come from the, the Muncinware building. So our, our plan is to take some of the concrete material from the building and store it on the site, that then used to fill in the, the ponds with. Uh, the backfill was six to eight feet of crushed construction debris, again, from the site, from the building. Uh, top of a pulverized concrete, kept it with a layer of, uh, three foot of clay, and then it becomes a parking lot, with that spot on top of that, so whatever our master plan is, we know the ponds are a parking lot. We just work around everything.
You're gonna build on it, will you?
You will not be able to build on it, you know, but we will be able to do a parking lot, so.
And can I ask a question?
Yes.
Initially, she said that this is just going to, this plane is to take care of what's on top of the liner?
Yes.
Okay, so we're never gonna worry about what's over it, we're just treating what's on top?
We're gonna cap, cap the whole thing, which includes everything, we're gonna cap it all and, and keep water from leaching down through it in the future, and when everything will be okay, according to this plan.
So we don't know what's over it right now?
We do not.
And we're not there, we're just gonna treat it, bill it in, and cover it up, and?
If we can, yes, if we can get ADM to agree with that, that's the plan.
What if they don't?
Then we go back again, but, but she's had, she's had...
She used to work for ADM.
She used to work for ADM, she's had discussions with ADM, uh, she feels very confident that they're gonna agree with this plan.
But this should not harm the groundwater or anything else like that on the?
That's, that's the point of this, is to, is to keep that from ever happening, so. And then the, the page behind that, uh, is our proposal, uh, for tonight. Uh, phase three is the chapter thirteen plan down at the bottom of the page, will be the, uh, stormwater construction permit, and the chapter thirteen plan, uh, comes to a total of fifteen thousand dollars. That includes not only the fees to the environmental folks, but also, um, you won't be writing a separate check to ADM for, for the permits. The permit numbers are included in that, so this, this will be the extent of what's in paper this part of the project.
Have you got a, a estimation, so to speak, of how long, once they could get started, that, that would take? You said that while they're doing that, they wouldn't go ahead and rebuild it, did you?
We didn't.
I understand, okay.
Yep, that is. She figures that this chapter thirteen plan to get to the end of it will take about four to six months, which should be sometime around the time that we're finishing up with the building and ready to move on to the next part of the process, so it should, it should fall in line pretty, pretty well, uh, with the process. Um, phase four, uh, do we, do you have some estimated cost for phase four? Uh, the permits that will be associated with, uh, closing those ponds. Uh, those, right now, it says estimated total of forty thousand, and again, that does include all of the permit fees to ADM, she won't be paying additional fees on top of that to, to ADM, that includes all their permit fees. Um, the reason that's an estimated cost is, these are the permits that she feels, uh, will be needed under the chapter thirteen plan, if during the, the process with ADM, there is another permit that comes up that may or may not be needed, that's when we need to add that, at that point, but we won't know for sure until we go through the chapter thirteen. So, and then, um, the chapter, uh, five and six is the actual cleanup process, uh, in the concurrents later with ADM. Uh, the, the actual cleanup part is typically determined, we don't yet have a firm grasp on, on the costs that will be associated with the actual fieldwork of building ponds in.
It's easy to bury the bed, the headline of something like that. And by understanding that, that environmental process can go on and the preparation to do whatever you wanna do at that site can go on parallel, and by the time the environmental is done, you'll be ready to build, or maybe closer to, to starting the building at that time?
Yes, that, that's our plan.
Okay.
Is, is to move the processes parallel.
So you can get started on whatever plan are you gonna do up there?
Yes, we, we can start with the building demolition.
Where is the, uh, asbestos located in the building?
There's some in the front office, some of the floor tile.
The old part?
The, the old office out front. There's also some in some pipe insulation. It's isolated, it's not in just one area, it's isolated into a few different areas.
Oh, so it's in the older part, oh.
Correct, that's right. In the big scheme of things, it's, it's not a lot of asbestos. I think we had an estimate of around thirty thousand dollars, which, that's a lot of money, but, you know, building that size, there's not a lot of asbestos in the building.
Well, I never will be convinced that bit of the Buhr Park couldn't be saved, but, I'm no engineer, no architect, but we may have to be filing chapter eleven or thirteen for this thing to go with.
This was the voluntary cleanup program.
So this is no longer?
Right.
Okay.
And then this changed it over to the chapter thirteen instead of the voluntary.
Okay. So this is?
Yeah, from phase three down, it changed.
Okay.
Tammy had our original proposal, uh, and, and she was correct. Originally, we were going to be under the volunteer, voluntary cleanup program through ADM, and so now that has changed over to this chapter thirteen, uh, so the initial proposal from phase three down has changed. Uh, would, uh, would say, uh, point out that, uh, phase one and two, we initially had, uh, forty thousand dollars, uh, on there just then, and we only spent thirty-five, so we had two dollars.
I mean, Kurt, we, in order to do anything on that property, we can't do anything till this ADM is just satisfied.
Uh, yes.
No matter if you, if you tear the building down, and if you didn't even build a building back, this is all still gonna be done.
If, if, if you're, if you were gonna move an industry out there, if you're gonna do a park, if you're gonna do anything out there, yes, you've got to take care of this environment.
So she's thinking, and this is, uh, sixteenth of March, then by the end of this month, she's hoping, I mean, it's just a couple of weeks or so later, you said to hope she would, uh, be able to get one of them?
Within the next two to four weeks, you'll have the, the first meeting with them, and then we'll move forward.
So are you wanting us to approve phase three, or phase three and forth?
Tonight would just be phase three. Uh, we need to, you know, we need to know for sure what, what we're gonna have in phase four before we ask you for that money. So phase three, we know for sure is, is fifteen thousand, that's all we're asking the park to be approved tonight.
Oh, yeah, please, yeah.
Right, you know, 'cause I didn't know what it was gonna be, I need this kind of update, I didn't know, I'm, I was today to put it on here. So what you need to do tonight is go ahead and prove this, sort of, ready phase three.
She said she would start, uh, next Monday.
Okay. Now make a motion. Okay. Liam's made a motion. Is there a second?
Awesome.
Tammy, Tammy, may I say? This also comes out of the acquisition, I don't think this is part of that. It's been a drag on that property. For fifteen thousand dollars. Motion in a second, okay, just, um, all in favor, say aye. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like some people to come to me about the sidewalks up here, especially from a few more places, so.
I had them look at that, especially when I looked at the other day. Yeah, and Heath looked at it for me too this past week, and just taking bids on it.
We've notified the contractor, he's still under warranty. Uh, he's getting his concrete supplier involved, so it's gonna be corrected.
And I don't have it all over town, correct?
Well, if it does, we're gonna, we've notified him, so even if his warranty runs out, this is an issue that arose before the warranty ran out, so it will be covered.
Good to know.
What was the problem with the sidewalks?
It's peeling up.
Peeling up, yes.
Ice and snow stayed on several days, and it started falling out, parts of the concrete just kinda chipped up, bubbled up there where it sat for four, five days in the shades, it was smoking the north side, and, uh, as soon as I heard it, I called the contractor, and I called Kurt, and he phoned, and he looked at it for the last week, Kurt looked at it the week before, so they've been made aware of it. I'll try to correct it, I'm sure.
Some of the issues uptown, puddles down, and all this been taken care of, we've turned it into...
Yeah.
All this, um, what's been taken care of.
Well, it's in the process.
When did you say we'd have an idea how much phase four was gonna cost?
Four to six months.
Four to six months.
So while that's going on, can the next step be forest demolition of the building, be doing that while you're working on the ponds, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll basically isolate ponds from the building, it'll be two, considered two separate sites, so we can be working on one site while the...
When you're gonna start forest of building, getting, uh, bids on demolition, what's the next step?
Thirty to forty-five days, we'll be, we'll start advertising, as soon as she beats with ADM and gets approval on this chapter thirteen.
Okay.
If they go along with that plan, then we should be able to start advertising demolition immediately.
And we think there's a lot enough, a lot of scrap or steel or anything that can be salvaged to go toward the cost of demolition, is that not bothering you?
That's correct.
Hoping to offset the cost?
That's right.
All right, thank you. As we get back in agenda, back in order, there's a few things on here, from equipment purchases that we've talked about a few times, all the way back to budget hearings, and then, uh, so they're, I wanna make sure the council is comfortable with taking care of these things tonight, the ones you're comfortable with, the ones you're not, uh, let me know as we go through this. Uh, the first thing we had on, on number five is recommendation purchase, um, a low book from Fox Chevrolet for a two thousand fifteen Chevrolet Subra R T five hundred HD for thirty-two four. Uh, I believe in here, there should be a cost, 'cause I know Mike got about three different bids, didn't you, Mike?
Got three bids, yeah.
Fox was the lowest on this particular, um, vehicle to replace the, uh, dump truck that he's got. Let's see if I can find it here, I'm not really sure it's here. Okay. Did you get a copy of them? My, I've got one from Fox for thirty-two four, one from Mike Freeman for thirty-two four oh seven.
You got the, the other, Carl Cannon.
Sorry.
The other one, Carl Cannon.
Carl Cannon, I'm sorry. Okay, all we have is three different bids. One from Carl Cannon, uh, thirty-five hundred HD, uh, same thing, is thirty, uh, thirty-nine sixty-three. One from Mike Freeman Chevrolet for thirty-two four oh seven, and one from Fox Chevrolet for thirty-two four hundred. And Mike, this would be replacing the, uh, dump trucks you got in nineteen eighty-one model. Just about wore completely out.
That's, that's, that's the one they said was bad in nineteen eighty-two, which do you use?
Yeah.
We're not using it anymore.
Was all these sealed, sealed bids?
No, they were just quotes that I got.
He got quotes, facts too. He called and got a quote they passed to him. We didn't call around, compare, and make him one last to the other. These were three different separate bids he got, and Fox was the lowest.
Bid, the bid level is, I get forget these days, they're up, so it's thirteen, fifteen thousand?
Fifteen.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen.
Fifteen thousand, so, so could, if this is thirty-two thousand, should that not be?
Well, we got three bids, that's what I'm saying.
Well, these were quotes, these were not formal bids.
Yeah, it has to be, I mean, if we accept it, like, that's our price.
Those are, those are formal bids then?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I say quotes, but that's, I mean, this is it.
Those are being sued for a bid, okay.
Is that okay, Scott?
You need to open them, open them, help mail them in, open them.
Yeah, I prefer clothes.
That's not, that's not good business there, Mike.
We wanna do, we need vehicles, so, we've all been in the same way, you know, we, we could call and get a price, disclose the facts to us, that's what we used, so. Yeah, I think we need, okay.
Just send the specs out, I don't have a fit.
You can do number half. All right, let's go to, uh, skip that then and go to number nine, which we did, is less than fifteen thousand dollars, and it is a two thousand fifteen Polaris Ranger five seven full size with ten thousand... five seventy full size with ten thousand two ninety-two motor sports superstore. This would be a vehicle that the rec center can use just about year round. Has a dump bed on it, fits three folks on the front, the seat, and this is something that can be used all the time, and even the street could use from time to time when they need to uptown, especially if they use it early in the morning. Larry, this is something, I know you looked at, Mike looked at, and spoke with, looked at about two, three years for one, but this was the best one y'all looked at, and if we can get this tonight, I'd be willing to go ahead and get that approved.
Now, make a motion.
Okay. Okay, Tammy? Any other discussion?
I will abstain on that one.
I abstain. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Okay, um, Tim, before we adjourn, I've got, I need to leave that session, we will not do anything afterwards.
Yeah, still.
I got, before we, I'm coming, before we adjourn, when we come back, I will have anything to vote on, I do have a bid this prospect we need to talk about. All right, Tammy, I'll let you go ahead.
I'm sorry, wait a second, what, you've got something for executive session?
No.
Oh, I thought you said.
No. Tammy, I want to be on the agenda about, uh?
Yes.
Carl Cannon.
Uh, we've had some complaints, and these look kind of rough, these, uh, kind of pop-up car lots down here in the shopping center. They got, they got a sign down there, I think we can enforce it as it is, but if not, we can hopefully leave, and, uh, I think get something, because other cities has been down this road before us, and, uh, stop people from dragging everything up down there, setting them on the side of roads, making town look pretty bad. Francis brought it up several months ago.
Yeah.
And we never did do nothing about it, just let it lay, and, uh, unlike her, I think something needs to be done, and pass ordinance or something, whatever the league recommends to, uh, stop.
Well, you know, last year, Mr. Scrush, Tammy, Larry, of course, ways where, that we, and they did call, I told you, that grabbed, and he lives in Texas, he's a younger son, perhaps some knew, knowing, and it's private property, he said, well, I put up signs that no parking, you know, and so, uh, she never did have much luck with him or, of course, now you've been in touch with him, have you not, on a handicap place down there?
I did, I spoke with him about a handicap, uh, assessment, or whatever you want to call it, to one of the businesses, because they would, you know, have you step up there, we pull up the page of the concrete, and, uh, but, Scott, I don't know with private property, because the city have any say so on that, I mean? It really limits us, you know? He hasn't contacted me, said, I don't want them cars being sold there, so I, I know what you're saying, there's cars there all the time.
And he's getting more.
Yeah, the only thing is, you know, if, if we see that it's a concerted effort by a group of people or entity to sell the cars there as a business, my understanding is it's just individuals kind of part of the car.
My understanding is not all individuals, maybe people does that, and brings them down there to.
I have, I have.
I'm not sure, but I know Adamsville or Folsom Hill or somewhere, up in Burnham, they passed something that, because they're parking them out there, just have them lined up from the western auto.
Yeah, I'm sure we probably could pass some ordinance that would hit it that in some way. Do you want me to call the property owner?
Well, he didn't sound really interested last year, I'll be honest with you.
That's my only thing is, I know what you're trying to say, and I've even sold a car there myself, I'll admit it, so I know there's people.
Don't do it no more.
It's been a few years. But, I'm just saying, you know, if that's his property, he hasn't contacted the city, I don't know what you're saying, because it, sometimes there's ten cars up there.
Well, you might, you might, uh, contact the automobile dealers association or something there to get, because I think there's something that we can, maybe we can, we can have them kind of stop that.
Maybe they could do something. Car dealership.
Well, if they got two or three cars down there, and same number on them.
Yeah.
They got to have a lot.
Be a sign, something wouldn't be right, but I think ninety-nine percent is just going to be trying to sell cars, and it's running up there, there's a lot of traffic in that area, and easy to sell cars.
Well, it's just, it's just looked, like Francis said four months ago, it's just looking bad.
Okay.
It's junky.
Great, you got it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make everybody aware that, uh, excuse me, J P Dyson, Fox Six Weather Club will be at five, five thirty, sooner, on, uh, Thursday, and basically, they're going to have a one-hour severe weather preparation seminar, and I think it'll, I actually begin at six-thirty, and then, of course, there's no charge for admission, you know, it's, it's free to anybody that wants to come, and they'll be broadcasting live on the weather at five, five-thirty, and six o'clock. So, you know, they did this at the motorsports back last year, and we had a pretty good turnout, we wanted to try to make it a little bigger venue, so that's the reason we, you know, talked to people about it, and, uh, you know, just want to invite everybody out to that, and they're going to have a special addition to the program, there's going to be recognition of first responders, law enforcement agents, nurses, doctors, and volunteers who worked at the Heikeberg Shops on P Ridge areas during the, you know, April twenty-seventh storms, which I think is a great ideal, and I just want to, you know, spread the word for anybody that worked at the event, please attend and be recognized, they're actually going to have a special section that they'll be able to sit at, and, uh, of course, we'll have the weather radios on sale, uh, if you've already got one, you can bring it and get a program, and, of course, they'll have, uh, handouts and flyers available to assist your business and your family's preparation for potential severe weather, because it's almost now, you know, and we'll probably go straight from snowstorms to four layers.
And Tammy, all the others, like you said, program, weather radios?
Yep, any of our program. And, we just, you know, we just want to ask the, you know, community to support this, because, uh, not only will the event provide, you know, knowledge and information, but it can, you know, save your life or your family member, and it's also a way for us to say thank you to Fox Six, and I don't know how many of y'all watch Fox Six, but they, they cover Hamilton quite a bit, and, uh, matter of fact, they shoved the sun coming up this morning, you know, at, at six-thirty, and, uh, I think Marla or Dana, they're, uh, they're trying to get some of the high school kids, I think, involved too, the, uh, science teachers and everything, so.
And it will take.
Right. So, just want to invite everybody out to that, make it a big event, we want them to, you know, we want to make this a year's thing, you know, but they have, you know, I think they've been very, very good to Hamilton, and we thank them for letting us use their buildings, so anybody that wants to come out, y'all, come on out Thursday.
This will come.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, I do need to go to executive session with the council on the, uh, business prospect, on possibly on interstate, and it's, uh, it's won't take long, but we won't do anything when we come back out, except adjourn, it will be under city business tonight. So, could I get a motion to do that, to discuss this?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, great. All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much.
But in the recognition, is there a second?
All in favor, say aye. All right, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Tammy, make a motion to adjourn. You say?
I'll say. Last very good.
Right, it's a second, motion to adjourn.
Thank you.